But we do have a summary to approve. Is there a motion?
No approval.
Have a motion to approve the November 17th summary. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We don't have budget amendments. We do have a few new business items.
Second.
Councilmember Blues moved approval of the new business items. Councilmember Gordon has seconded that motion. Any discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
I am so sorry. I couldn't get my electronic going. But anyway, I have emailed councilmembers and distributed a copy of three pages of the council calendar, which is actually item H on new business. And if I could, I'm going to move to make a couple changes. The first one is on January 26th, the Joint Planning Commission, there are some difficulties with some folks who can't be there, so I'm going to propose in the motion that that be canceled. And that's at 9:00 a.m. on the 26th of January. And then on September, and in my final look at this calendar, it occurred to me that the September 2nd council meeting could be moved to the 9th, and then we wouldn't have such a long three-week lag of council meetings. So I'm going to propose that go to the 9th. And then finally, in December, there was some question about, could we move the council meeting to 7:00 on December 2nd, and then cancel the 6:00 p.m. meeting on the 14th, as well as the work session on the 14th, and move Intergov to the 7th before services? So with that said, I'd like for discussion purposes to go ahead and move those changes to item number H.
Have a motion and second amendment, item H, as indicated in Councilmember Gordon's presentation. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that amendment? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on the new business items? Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a question on B. And I didn't know if Commissioner Helm was here or not to address this. And I hate to hold this up, but I'm just curious. These are all the lease agreements for the organizations that are within the Black and Williams Center. I know we've had a lot of discussion in the outside agency committee about this, and I didn't know if we've done any type of space utilization study in-house, or have looked at how much space these organizations really need in there, if we're going to proceed with free rent for a lot of these organizations, and get a better handle on who's in there and what they need. But I think that would be appropriate before we, or as a condition to approve these lease agreements.
Commissioner Cole, do you want to address those questions for just a moment?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear all the questions.
Well, in looking at B, this is approving the leases of the Black and Williams Neighborhood Center, and this has been an issue we've been discussing outside agencies, as you know, about who's in there, what kind of rent we're charging, which we've come to find we're not charging any rent. Have we done a space utilization study in there in-house within your department to look at, are we utilizing the space appropriately? Can we get additional agencies who are also looking for a home in there? Have we done that?
There has not been a space utilization study done that I'm aware of. I don't believe that Commissioner Helm has initiated anything like that. This is a continuation of the agencies that were already there with some additional language to give us a little more authority over how they're using the spaces. That was the only change in the lease at this time.
Well, as you know all too well, we have a big capital need for that building as well. And, you know, fitting as many people in there as possible would be ideal, especially given the fact that the rent is very affordable in all the cases. So what would we need to be able to do that? Do we have the expertise in-house to be able to analyze the needs of each of those groups and to see if we do indeed have additional space? We could add people in there?
We'd be glad to take a look at it and work with Commissioner Helm and those agencies to do analysis. I'm not sure if we have all the expertise we need, but we can sure give it a good shot. If not, recruit the expertise we need.
Sure.
Commissioner Helm has a sick child today, which is why she is not here with us. I think, and Commissioner Cole can correct me if I'm mistaken about this, but I think the objective with this has been an effort to document what is currently in place without trying to realign who's where in the building, or to try to make some judgment call about whether they should or shouldn't be there, or somebody else might be more appropriately a tenant. So we have merely been trying to document what's there. The analysis you request is entirely reasonable, and it may well be that in connection with the budget process next year, having that information available would be quite appropriate.
And that's what I was leaning towards between now and the budget cycle.
Sure. That we can do.
Okay.
I don't have the leases in front of me, but I think they are for the current fiscal year.
Right. And that's all on that. I have some other questions, but I know councilmembers want to address this issue as well, so I'll yield to them right now.
Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. And I certainly understand Councilmember Stenit's concerns, and I think as Commissioner Cole has pointed out, there is additional language in the leases for the tenants of the Black and Williams Neighborhood Center to address certain issues, certain concerns that have come up in the past. And one of those changes is in this lease for each of the tenants is that the lessie will use only that portion of the building that is listed. And special requests would have to be made for use of other spaces. The lessor, that is, the government will provide, under terms of this lease, cleaning services only for common areas. The lessies will provide cleaning for the space that they will occupy, and that will be somewhat of a savings. Another salient point here is that the lessie, and I'll just read this, agrees to immediately vacate the premises, terminate this lease if it does not regularly utilize the space provided herein. The space may not be used simply for storage of materials or equipment, or be used less than 75% during the center's normal operating hours, and so forth. So the lease agreement has been updated to, you know, to address certain concerns, to save some money. I certainly support the recommendation of an inventory, but I would like to get these leases on the docket. They've been somewhat delayed as it is because of these changes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Henson.
Thank you, Mayor. I too spoke with Commissioner Helm, and she explained the reason for item B being on, going on to the docket, and I'm okay with it, as long as I agree with Councilmember Stenit that this is an issue that needs to be addressed, not only with this property, but with other properties. And I feel like there's some inequalities. There are other LFUCG-owned property that agencies are paying rent. So I just think, you know, what's fair for one is fair for all, and that it needs to be addressed. So whether that's through the administration, or if we put it in committee, between now and our next budget cycle, I think something needs to be done. Thank you.
Councilmember Maris.
Thank you, Mayor. And on item B as well, I think you answered the first part of my question, and that was, is this intended to simply formalize the current arrangement as we continue to evaluate facility use?
Yes.
Or is the administration recommending this as the appropriate relationship moving forward?
It is, as I understand it, just a documentation of the relationships that have been a part of the Black and Williams arrangement for years.
Okay.
It's not a recommendation, it's not anything more than that. It's just trying to paper what probably should have been papered quite some time ago.
Okay. If I were one of the tenants in the building, could I perceive this as what to expect down the road in that my rent's free today with this lease, so next year it's probably going to be the same amount?
That's not our intent.
Okay.
It may well be the council ultimately comes to a decision that one or more of these tenants is providing such a useful service to the community that they ought to continue to occupy the space rent-free. On the other hand, it may be that somebody's doing okay, but they ought to pay rent. May be that there are three of them that we think aren't contributing as much as they should, and three new ones need to come in. So there's no judgment being made on any of those issues now. This is just an effort to document what's there.
Okay. You actually provided a perfect segue into my next question. I think when the needs assessment was done, the outside agency oversight committee at the time, one of the things that we were hoping to get out of that was what agencies and what programs and services does this community and the government deem critical to the extent that if they couldn't afford to pay rent, or they needed some other types of subsidies to be able to exist and offer that service or program to our community, that we would provide that subsidy. So could you go? What I would like to see is maybe sometime in January or February, from the administration, their perspective on not only this facility, as Councilmember Henson said, but all of our facilities, which agencies and programs are in them that we're providing subsidies, whether it be free rent, or we're just maintaining the buildings, et cetera. Which ones administration recommends continue receiving that subsidy, and which ones we want to look at doing something different with?
I'm very comfortable making that recommendation to you, but I think it would probably best be made in the context of the budget presentation, which would be probably a couple months later.
Later than that.
In the process. The budget process is the time at which we typically review all of those partner-agency relationships, and thanks to the work of a number of people in general services, we now have, for the first time, a fairly comprehensive list of who's in our facilities. And we have like 550 different parcels of property. It's been a monumental undertaking, but we finally got a pretty firm grip on that. And now's a perfect time to evaluate all of those and do it in kind of a global way so that, as Councilmember Henson says, we try to treat people fairly unless we see some real good reasons why somebody ought to be there rent-free.
Right. And I'll actually give them another kudos in that not only do we have a list of who's in what building, but we have a list of what buildings we own.
Yes.
And I think that was a monumental accomplishment.
No small accomplishment.
Right, right. So they've been doing fantastic job, and so congratulate you on that, and look forward to your recommendation. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, will these leases have a provision for early termination of the lease agreements?
Again, I don't have the leases in front of me, but I believe that they just go through this fiscal year. So they're a year-to-year lease.
The reason I ask is if that were the case, then you could enter into the lease, and we would be documenting who's currently in the space and who's the entity, and et cetera, et cetera. But if, you know, as we go into the budget process, if we would have the option to terminate the lease, or to modify the lease at that time, I think that would work. It'd solve all of our problems, so if we could do something like that.
I think there's a 90-day termination provision in the leases that has been proposed, if my memory serves me correctly. Councilmember Blues.
Yeah. Actually, Mayor, the final clause in the proposed lease is this, "Failure to adhere to the parameters listed in any of the items above, and especially items 13 and 14," and I'd be happy to share those if you need be, "shall be cause for immediate termination of this lease agreement." So yes, the lease can be terminated if its terms are violated.
Councilmember Lane.
Can I just ask Mr. Blues a question? The idea that I had was, could we put a provision to say that the urban county government, for any reason, could terminate with notice so that they don't have to even be in default or fail to operate under the terms of the lease?
I don't have a lease in front of me, but my recollection is the provisions Councilmember Blues read are the basis upon which the lease can be terminated for cause. In addition, my recollection is that the leases had a provision in there that would permit either party to cancel on 90 days' written notice. So we would have that flexibility.
And I believe the natural expiration does follow the fiscal year.
Anything further? All right. Councilmember Stenit.
Not on that issue, on the other issues, I assume we're done. Well, Commissioner Cole said you're there. Number F, this is the senior and adult therapeutic recreation position.
Yes.
Is this the, I thought we put enough money in the budget for this position.
This was a position that was vacated by an internal promotion into another division of government, and so now we are trying to fill the position. And when we went back and looked at the job duties of what that person was actually doing, it had changed significantly, so there was a new job description written, and that changed the value of the job grade of that position. And so this is not the position that you all fund, you did completely fund, and it was filled over a year ago. This is a different position in the same field.
And who was the study done by? Does that say they have new duties, or is that the normal PAQ process?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything further on the new business items? We have a motion to approve them. Let's proceed to vote. Those in favor of approving the new business items, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. In a rare circumstance, we have no presentations today.
Thank you.
So we are ready to proceed to council reports. Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. One, just to report back to the council from the Animal Care and Control Advisory Board, we met again last week when we get updated numbers on animal care and control efforts. As you know, this past year, we kept their budget the same, the money that we pay for animal care and control through the Humane Society. But give you a kind of a result, or end result, of our efforts on that, we've had a 50% increase in calls to animal care and control this year. That's a big jump in numbers from citizens calling, asking for service. Forty-seven citations were issued during the month of October as compared to 15 last year because of the ordinances changes. That has been a positive jump. Fifty-one special patrols have been conducted versus 13 last year. Big jump there. Response times, this is the big one. Response times used to be well over an hour to two hours. Now, the response times for vicious dogs are down to 12 minutes, and 15 minutes for all other calls. So that's a big improvement that this body and Mayor and everyone has worked together to improve for animal care and control. So just want to make sure you're aware that the money we put towards that problem has been well received and well worth it. The last thing is, as many of you know through the media, that there is a budget issue that we're facing here in government, and it's important, though, through the context of our meeting last Thursday night and talking about the bonds that we're hoped to issue here in January, about the budget reduction and where we're really facing the problem. Our problem has nothing to do with our urban services funds. That's the solid waste, that's the sanitary sewer, that's the eventual stormwater management fee. It has to do with general fund and general fund only. That's where the cuts have to come from. I think there's been some confusion on this body, as well as some folks in the media, and how those cuts have to come about. Because keep in mind, our general fund this year is $280 million approximately. $150 million of that is public safety. $30 million of that's debt service. $70 million is payroll, so that left about $30 million that we have to play with right now if we don't get into payroll. And that $30 million represents operating costs amongst every division in government. So that's our task. So I just wanted to frame that because I think it's been misreported about what we're looking at. We're looking at general fund only. That's the $280 million. Again, it has nothing to do with solid waste, stormwater fees, or anything else, sewer fees. That's our urban services fund. So just want to make sure everyone's on the same page when it comes to that. And our next bonding workshop, hopefully we'll conclude on December 3rd, once again at 4:00 p.m., for those of you who weren't, were not there last Thursday night. But that's next Thursday, December 3rd at 4:00 p.m. Hopefully, we'll be able to finish our work then. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Henson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce the celebrity challenge for the Salvation Army. Many of you have already signed up, and will be competing against each other. I am guaranteed to have the most money in my kettle. But they will, I think it's a fun thing to do. Mayor, I hope you can participate. I know we've got you tentatively down. But if, I've got several slots open. You all look like a bunch of really good bell ringers to me. Some of you have already told me that you're just not available, and that's okay. I'll forgive you, but you can contribute to my kettle. But that's December 5th, so anyone that would like to sign up, please give me a call or email. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just confirming, I wanted to confirm the councilmembers who have offered to serve on the moratorium issues work group, and that's councilmembers Linda Gordon, Tom Blues, Diane Lawless, and Peggy Henson. And the second thing I wanted to mention was that, I think Councilmember McCord, you also saw these guys out in the audience, Brian Rainey, Brian Rainey and Nick Such. And I know that several of us have heard their presentation, all of us who are on the council, heard the presentation from the Awesome Inc. guys three or four weeks ago. And Councilmember McCord's been very active with them. I think the mayor, I think you have, I think others on the council have been. I happened to stop in at the 54-hour marathon startup weekend on Sunday evening, and you all had, what, six work teams, startup groups. Actually, Brian, you might want to come up here since you can help me a lot with this and save time. I did pick up a T-shirt, and the thing that really impressed me was that this is the second year that these guys at Awesome Inc. have done this project, and other cities that have done it include Dallas, Cleveland, New York, Los Angeles, London, Mountain View, Colorado? Mountain View.
Mountain View, California.
California.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Boulder, Colorado, is where it started.
And right, Boulder's where it started, right.
Yes.
And Lexington, right?
That's right, Lexington. That was probably the most exciting thing for us, was to be on the map with cities like those that Vice Mayor Gray just mentioned. It was a very successful event, like Vice Mayor Gray said. Six ideas were launched, anything from like an iPhone app that would allow you to replace your wedding photographer by using Wedding Guess to take pictures and then upload those to a Flickr account, all the way to a local resource finder, which is a website where you can find out what's going on in Lexington. So lots of good, solid ideas came from the weekends. And probably more important than the ideas that were launched, though, was just the community and the connections that were built from the participants. So very successful weekend.
You said it better than I could, Brian. But I think the energy and the enthusiasm that was present in that room, and it wasn't just 20-year-olds, 25, there was a very diverse group, age group, and the, I think the value of mentioning it today is that it illustrates, at least to me, the extraordinary talent that exists in the community, and with very little actual financial resources. They're creating the energy that can, in the long term, even in the short term, create the kind of economic development that we all have been talking about. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Thanks for you and Nick coming. Nick, by the way, is on his way to Stanford Business School, which is, what, second, first, second, or third in the country every year this fall, right?
Actually, in about a few years.
Okay, okay.
If you'd like to be here in Lexington.
Deal. Thank you.
Maybe we can keep you here or get you back real quickly, one way or the other. Councilmember Feigl.
Thank you, Mayor. I just moved to approve the Neighborhood Development Fund list.
Second.
Have a motion, but Councilmember Feigl, second. But Councilmember Ellinger, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. And to the points that are made by Councilmember Stenit and Vice Mayor Gray, this is how these things connect. You have a general fund shortfall. Our general fund is heavily dependent upon payroll tax and upon jobs created inside Fayette County. So the reason why it's important, Brian and Nick and Luke do what they do, is because you're creating economic opportunity and you're creating jobs inside our boundaries, and really addressing the problem that we have, which is the lack of tax revenue to provide services for citizens. So Anthony Wright and I stopped by Friday night, and, you know, I just want to personally say thank you for what you all do. And there's so many things that go on down in your place, and you guys, it's sometimes hard to kind of sum up what you do, but I would ask all councilmembers to stop in and take a look at the activity that these guys are doing, and the folks that are in that shop is pretty amazing. And, you know, Brian, last year, what I found interesting was last year, the companies and the ideas that came out of Startup Weekend, and how viable they are now economically, and not only for Lexington, but for the state of Kentucky. So again, thank you all for what you're doing. Along those same lines, this past week on Thursday night, after taking up the bonding issue, the capital issue that we had, this council met in its Economic Development Task Force, and we've moved forward, a PSA with Commerce Lexington, our partner in economic development. And again, that PSA is their framework for what goes on in this community, and the money that we have given them, what we expect from that. But this council has an opportunity through an RFP they are putting out for an internal or external, excuse me, study of what they do and how they do it. And so I just want to remind councilmembers that we have an opportunity between now and December 3rd for what we would like to see measured, studied, brought back in great detail. I think the timing of this RFP and this work is going to be very essential for us because it'll probably coincide, the results of it, right around the budget time. And it probably will give us the best tools that we have to craft that PSA going forward, and what is it that we expect as a governmental body. So I would just encourage you over the next couple of days to give thought to what is it that you'd like to see included in that. And again, thanks to all those community partners that are allowing Lexington maybe not to feel quite the pinch that some of the other places around our country are feeling. While it is tough and difficult, and this body has a lot of tough choices, and frankly, the employees of this government have a lot of difficult choices to make heading forward as a body, we all do. It isn't as bad as if we were in California, or Las Vegas, or Florida, or some other places. And we need to look at what we do have versus what we don't have. And so with that, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and to be very thankful for what we do have. Thank you, Mayor.
Well said. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items, both of which fit into the thinking of you category. We've all missed our colleague, Councilmember Beard, and I just want to wish him well and hope that we see him back here at this horseshoe soon. And then secondly, Councilmember McCord mentioned Thanksgiving, and at this time of the year, when we want to be with our family and good friends, as we move from Thanksgiving into December holidays and New Years, I just want to raise the awareness that we have military members in 120 countries around the world, many of whom are in harm's way. And so as we go about our holiday celebrations, I hope that we will each think of those folks, and many of them have been urban county government employees who were deployed, and just give some thought to those who can't be with family and friends. some thought to those who can't be with family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any other council member, Councilmember Stenit?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to add that Tuesday, December 1st, we'll have our Building Inspection Task Force first meeting, and it's been changed from 10 o'clock to 10:30 to accommodate the Intergovernmental Committee meeting that morning. So just forgot to make that note, want to make sure it's 10:30, not 10 o'clock on Tuesday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks very much. There's nothing further. I have just one matter that I want to raise by way of the mayor's report. Last summer, while I was participating in a conference of mayors event, I had the opportunity to hear an individual by the name of Adrian Ellis speak to our group. Mr. Ellis is the executive director of Jazz at Lincoln Center. To make a rather lengthy presentation short, Mr. Ellis works with Wynton Marcellus and his orchestra at the Lincoln Center. They were looking to identify five cities around the country where we might be, they might be able to establish a residency program and work not only with the community but the school systems to do an extended session of performances and teaching about jazz. Next Monday and Tuesday, Mr. Ellis will be here for purposes of evaluating the prospects of Wynton Marcellus and his orchestra coming for such a program in connection with the development of the lyric. And his schedule is such that I think he's going to be available to speak to us at the work session next Tuesday afternoon, week from today. So I just tell you that so that you might be thinking a little bit about it. If you have questions about the particulars of that, feel free to let me know if you're interested in visiting with him in a little more detail than what you might see during the work session. Let me know, and we'll try to work it out as he will be here Monday afternoon and most of the day on Tuesday. But it's an exciting opportunity to help the folks at New York's Lincoln Center learn a little bit more about the lyric, learn a little bit more about some of the great things that are going on in the Fayette County Public School system, to learn about some of the absolutely incredible things that are going on at the UK School of Music. And I think there's some real opportunities to not only help the schools, the university, and the Third Street quarter, but to help the entire community if we can work something out. That's all I have, is does anyone wish to address the council on matters not on the agenda today? Do I hear a motion, we adjourn? I think we stand adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks.